No, try it.
Maybe I'll look that up while we're here.
Well, there's something to look at on there to look at the video.
I just want to make sure there's sound.
She just made a couple of posts regarding COVID stuff in the last couple of days.
Oh, did?
Yeah, I hear something.
Yeah.
I hear you. Somebody said that too. Okay, are we ready?
There you go. All right, yep, we got audio. There we go.
Glandre Institute of Fire, United States of America. Consider all over the nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and pro.
Yeah.
We grab a call.
Yeah. So it's a record.
All right, roll call. Councilman Curl is not in attendance due to being a high risk, just so you know.
Really?
Council President Trump?
Here.
Councilman Ben and Daddy?
Here.
Councilman Wolf?
Here.
Councilman Bruger?
Here.
Councilman Nakamera?
Here.
Are we green cards? There's nobody here, so we're not doing green cards. There you go. And then, what is next?
It's district legislation.
Legislation, go for it. And then you guys can ask questions.
Okay, we will start with ordinance 052020, an ordinance admitting the wage and salary ranges, the number of employees and positions for the village of Minerva Park, and declaring it an emergency. This create, or it doesn't create.
Changes.
It changes the full-time administrative assistant, its pay range. It creates a part-time administrative assistant if is needed at this time. There's no choice.
There's no choice.
Immediate plans to hire them. It has a full-time fiscal officer clerk of courts and an assistant fiscal officer part-time. Any questions or debates on this?
Do you want me to just kind of give a quick overview just for the record?
Yeah, go ahead.
The quick version of this is we're basically rearranging the employees that we currently have. Due to Janetta giving her two-week notice on Friday, we will be replacing our fiscal officer by actually changing one of our current employees to doing multiple jobs. She will be the clerk of courts as well as the fiscal officer. We would have an assistant to her that would be doing five-year forecast and some of our closeouts. We would have our current administrative assistant doing still website and newsletter as well as all of the other duties that she does, answers the phones, and then any other overflow we would be giving her. As far as hiring another person, it would be part-time. With everything going on right now, it would just be a bad idea to try to do it, you know, try to hire somebody part-time right now. So at this point, you know, it will be after all of this that we decide to do it because we should be slow in here at this point. The main part to this is we had budgeted already somebody to do minutes to take that off of the table, so we have that money that was already budgeted in there. We also have, with eliminating the fiscal officer position, that's going to eliminate another full-time employee with benefits at this point in time. So doing it this way is going to be a lot more work for the current employees that we have, however, it's going to save the village quite a bit of money for them stepping up and doing some of the things that they're able to do. So do I have a dollar amount that it's going to save? No, because I don't have actual contract, you know, I have not sat down with each one individual. This is the first step of everything, but I only have two weeks to get this in place and make sure that I have a fiscal officer ready to move forward, so we don't get behind. And at this point, we all can agree that we're already behind. So trying to get these changes implemented, getting all of their salary ranges put together, is something that I want to get done as quick as possible, but again, it's sitting in front of you the way that it is. You guys make the decision. That's where we are.
Have the people who will be affected by the switch-up, have they been, you know, been aware of and?
Oh, absolutely.
Then they sent everything? Beautiful.
No, this is something that was discussed over since Friday. This is something that, you know, it's, I've known that it's something that they would be interested in.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's something that, you know, they have interest in. It's just a matter of making sure that when it comes down to it, that we really want to move forward with it. So again, there was, there were, we had originally planned to take the meeting minutes and things like that. We would, we had already planned to hire a part-time person. So not only... That was already, so we were already planning on hiring somebody to do minutes and different things like that. That was something that started putting in the budget, so this is...
I just wanted to make sure that the people who are here presently aren't getting jumped on, that's all.
No, it wasn't my idea to, and it wasn't, it was a group effort to decide whether or not we thought this would actually work and if it was in the best interest of the village, and after all of our discussions, I believe this.
Excellent, okay. I just want to make sure that everybody involved was all?
Yes.
Aware and on board?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Beautiful.
Okay, so I wanted to just talk about the salary ranges. The administrative assistant went from fourteen to, it was fourteen eighteen, now it's fourteen twenty.
Correct. They're going to be taking on much more. They were not making anywhere near fourteen dollars an hour to start with.
Well, okay, so why did it, if they were making less than fourteen?
They are making less than fourteen. The pay range starts at fourteen, but they're, they're already making more than that.
Well, you said it made me think we weren't even making...
Oh, yeah. They weren't, yeah, they're, they're already well over the fourteen, so if we don't adjust that based on the fact that they're going to be taking on new...
Well, this isn't a day, this is a, so you have a part-time person and a full-time person. Normally, normally I would see a part-time person usually coming in lower. It's one of the advantages of having a part-time person, but the, I was just curious about the, I don't know what, I don't know what the full-time administrative assistant is naming now.
I have a nice watch. I don't have, I don't have all of, I don't have everything. Yeah, we have not gone through all of that, as you are very well aware, so we'll, we'll just leave it at that. So yes, as far as having all of that, the reason that we did this, I know that at this point in time, the person that is currently doing, I know they are getting towards the top of that. I do not know exactly what it is at this point, and I can tell you I...
But I'm not saying it.
So we're bumping it up so that we can give them a raise over the next year or two and be fair.
Correct.
Say you're doing better.
Or we're going to have to come back to the table. I don't know why it says fourteen.
Because they're getting...
I mean, the range shouldn't even say fourteen or whatever because she's, they're clearly not making fourteen.
Well, because that way if we hire someone new, we could hire someone at fourteen, but she's been here for a long time, doing a good job, and now she's getting closer to eighteen and going to cap out. That makes sense.
So it's just a lot longer time.
We could hire it at fourteen or whatever, and I'm glad that we don't have to put them at the top.
It gives me more flexibility to be able to do the things that I need to do depending on what their day-to-day operations ends up being. Again, as we're doing this, it's, you know, this was a little bit of a surprise that I was going to be doing this right now anyways. So it's just a matter of having flexibility to not have to come back to you guys, knowing that there's, there's the potential of not even being able to have these meetings for the next thirty to forty-five days if we don't get Zoom or if we don't have something like that. So this, again, I think the bigger picture is we are eliminating a full-time person without full benefits and all of that, so yes, you're going to increase their daily activities, so you're going to increase their pay, but ultimately, at the end of the day, this is going to lower.
So the, so the full-time person you're eliminating is the clerk of courts? What full-time person are you eliminating?
We're merging two full-times. Yeah, we're merging two full-times to make it one full-time, and as you can see, that pay salary for that merging those two is actually right at what we're paying one of them.
It's the fiscal offers, this is the identical range to the fiscal officer currently.
Yes.
And...
So basically, you could say we're eliminating the other position, however, we're not eliminating that position. We're merging them.
Well, there's Laya was doing the clerk of courts, and what was her other, just the police administrative assistant?
She does everything for that as well.
So...
She does all of our mayor's court. She does everything for the police department. She inserts all the tickets. She does all of the ordering for anything that the police department needs. She does.
So she's doing her full-time job, her current full-time job plus a full-time fiscal officer?
No, she's not doing the full-time. That's why we have an administrative assistant. She's going to be doing the HR. She's going to be doing the receipts. She's going to be doing payroll. She's going to be doing the basic things that the fiscal officer currently is doing now. The assistant fiscal officer is going to be doing all of our five-year forecasting, closing out the books, and doing things like that, you guys, what we've been having. That's what we've been struggling with. So we're getting, we're getting a qualified person to do those particular things.
The heavier lifting.
The heavier lifting is we're getting a Morgan on.
So who's doing the other part of Laya's job?
That's what we just said. When we get ready to hire that person, we have not done that.
These...
So that's going to be the second administrative assistant, because they're only going to be doing the clerical work. They're going to be doing inservation probably, and again, we haven't determined what is going to be so time-consuming because we haven't tried this yet, so we want to make sure that...
Laya knows what her own job is. She's got a big job.
It's basically wrong from like three full-time positions to two full and part-time.
Yeah, but the...
That's one way to...
Well, sure it is, but I, you know, I'll, I'll just, I think it's commendable that we're trying to rework, because I, I've always liked to do that in my, in my business, but I, I just think that we're, you're rushing into this, and, and this is what the, you know, previously we had with the, the previous mayor, is that she wanted to put something in place before there were even job descriptions, and then, I mean, I, I get it. I just, I just don't like the fact that we put person in position without a job description, and then all of a sudden we decide we don't like what they're doing, and then, well, what are they supposed to be doing? Well, I don't know, because they don't have a job description, but they're doing what I want them to do.
Misinformation about that is, there's job descriptions in there. They just chose not to give you guys those, because I have job descriptions. Now, this actual job description is not in there yet because we just did that today, but that being said, I have a fiscal officer, I have clerk of courts, I have every single job description in there that I can go print. I don't know why we have such a hard time getting them, because they're in there.
So I had no idea that Laya had the skill set to be a fiscal officer.
Kim's going to be training her, and Kim's going to be walking her through the entire thing, and all she's going to be doing is doing payroll and doing the actual human resources part, the part that we need in-house.
I think she...
So she will be paying bills.
She's already been doing the public records part of the fiscal officer's...
Well, that is not an accountant or even a bookkeeper. I mean, that's a special skill set. I mean, I, I don't think we should be dismissive of the fact that, you know, people go to school to be accountants.
Well, I don't think...
I don't think there's any way you can compare Kim's skill set to Laya's skill set in terms of accounting.
Do you know what Laya's skill set is?
So hold on, I didn't even know that we should be discussing the who of these jobs. That's not what's in front of us.
Correct.
What's in front of us is, do we believe that this is a structure that can work at these price ranges? Can we afford them? If, if, if those things are fine, then we need to trust our administration, who is the people who do the hiring, to do that hiring. If this isn't a structure...
We're all confident that we can, and we're all confident that this is, we are all comfortable and confident that this is going to work, and if it doesn't work, we're going to go, we're going to bring it right back, and we're going to change it again. So at this point, this is what we have.
I personally wish we would have thought of this before we hired Janetta.
So, yeah, I mean, at this point, yeah, I mean, at this point, I, we're, we're com, you know, we're comfortable, we're confident, or else I wouldn't have put it in front of you. This is something, you know, again, that we, we've discussed. It's something that, you know, it's...
I'll just do my due diligence.
You're absolutely right.
Otherwise, I should just bring a rubber stamp in here, and I don't have to sit here at all, right?
No, you are. We're really welcome to do that.
Whatever the mayor wants, we'll be able to work.
I, I like hearing, I mean, you know, being new on the council, I like hearing the different perspectives from the...
There's no, yeah, there's no reason not to ask.
The two major mayoral candidates, like, one to, you know.
No, there's no reason not to ask the questions.
I'm constantly bringing up things that aren't very popular. Does that stop me from, in my opinion?
Right, and at the end of the day, I mean, at the end of the day, they're...
I mean, that's not a discount, Tony, or anyone else's opinion. I just, these two tend to go...
We make decisions, and sometimes they don't work, and I'll be the first to admit that goes wrong.
I, I just, yes, I, I realize that everybody knows that. I mean, anybody who's dealing with people and making decisions about jobs and jobs.
For me, I put a large value in the fact that Leah and Becky have stuck it out here as long as they have.
And they're, the thing that, the thing that I feel so confident of, they will stay until six o'clock to get a job done if they need to. They will come in at seven-thirty in the morning to get a job done if they need to. They will work through the lunch hour if they need to. They will ask questions, whether it's to myself, they will, those, there are a lot of people that give a hundred and ten percent, and those girls give a hundred and twenty. So, I mean, as far as that goes, I have been super impressed with their, with the work ethic that they have. So I feel like this is something that we want to try. It's going to save the village money. If it doesn't work, we're going to put back in a fiscal officer, and we're going to look to hire one. Whether it worked for Lynn the last time, whether it didn't work for Lynn, it could take us two, four, six, eight weeks to do it, so this could be something two, three weeks from now, we decide it's not going to work, but I guess at this point, at least we have payroll done, bills are paid.
I would just ask you to look at the assistant fiscal officer compensation, which kind of confused me. Are you sure that's what, I mean, based on her skill set, it seems to...
That's what she wants. You have to remember, she's the one that did this. She is, you have to remember...
No, but I would just, she makes mistakes too when she types things.
Um, she's not a parent nester.
I would just, just make sure she's, she's...
I'm going to say it this way.
I mean, she's very, that's very generous of her.
And I'm, I'm going to say it this way, and she can correct me if I'm wrong later on, and she can type it in here. You have people that really care about this village, and it's amazing to find people that really do, and I think honestly, she's doing it out of goodness of heart at this point. I'm not going to say that after a year that that isn't reassessed, but I think we have somebody that, you know, has been there for us and, you know, things didn't work the way that, you know, we had hoped, but we still have somebody that really cares about our village that is willing to, I'm going to go with publicist.
I mean, this, this assistant fiscal officer compensation, it ranges from, when you convert to hourly, like, five-seventy to seven-fifteen an hour. I mean, it's not
Well, do you think that how many hours?
like...
That's part-time, so if you...
Yeah, that's what I mean, the part-time, what I was talking about.
If you convert it to a full-time equivalent, it's eleven dollars and forty-seven cents an hour, so...
She's concerned about, I think, my guess is that she can get the job done in two or three hours, and she's...
And, and that's fine. I just think you're going to have to...
And I say that depends on the conversion of the time of the hour she thinks.
Yes.
Well, she thinks this is a six-hour job for her.
And someone else who's...
I just, I get what you, you know, you...
One's part-time consulting gig is not going to go...
Put your guard up a little.
Right, and at the end of the day, at the end of the day, if this doesn't work, six months from now, a year from now, two months from now, I'll think I'll get the table going, you know what, I made a mistake, and the first thing I'm going to do is say, hey, I made a mistake, and this isn't going to work.
So, 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 and, but when you come back, if you should come back, and hopefully this works out perfectly, but if you come back to the table, one of your arguments is that it's costing us less money, and I'm just here to tell you that.
No, because it doesn't...
And that will, we, it's as much of an argument if you have to pay market rates for a part-time, high-level fiscal officer.
We would go back to where we were originally at, and we would offer the same, the same for the fiscal officer that we currently have, but at this point, this is a good opportunity to take advantage of the change, and that's what we had all asked for for the last couple of years, is, you know, maybe not doing everything the same way that we've done it before, and this is, this is an opportunity to try something different, and if it works, it works. If it doesn't, we'll be two weeks behind.
And we're going to be delayed anyway with the national situation, like every, every issue, every part of my project's ground to a halt. I'm sure everyone else's has as well.
I'm not much affected by this, sir, for...
So again, it's up to you guys. So at this point, passing this emergency and waiving the readings is going to take off five of you, because we only do have five of you here. It's my understanding, and I don't think four is going to do it for an emergency, I think it's five, so there you go.
Well, you can, you can pass an emergency with four, but you can't waive the readings.
There you go. So again, considering you guys, if you don't want to do it, then we'll figure out what you need to do in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so getting, as we're getting close to that, just since I'm new to this, what I, when we first vote to waive the readings or first, first vote to pass it?
So the procedure is to move to waive readings, right? We need a supermajority to waive readings, so we need a minimum of five of, of six council people. And then, provided that passes, the, the readings are waived, and then you would move for passage, at which we just need a simple majority, which would be four of six.
Wonderful, and I asked that question in no way saying that I wanted to end, as a symbol that I wanted to end, end debate, so if anyone has any further debate, please feel free to comment up. Okay, seeing no one on a microphone, I will move to waive the second and third reading of this and pass it as an emergency.
Just two things, so first you just wave, move to waive readings.
Maybe we waive readings, sorry.
Second.
All right, Councilman Nakamera?
A reluctant aye. Citing the situation.
Councilman Bruger?
Aye.
Curl is excused. Councilman Ben and Daddy?
Aye.
Council President Trump?
Aye.
And Councilman Wolf?
Aye.
All right, and now we have, go for it.
Okay, and having waived the additional meetings, now I move to pass ordinance 52020 as an emergency legislation. Second.
Councilman Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Trump?
Aye.
Councilman Ben and Daddy?
Aye.
Councilman Nakamera?
Aye.
And Councilman Bruger?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, hopefully one that's not quite as divisive. Before I read this next, or maybe I'll read it and then we'll ask. This is Resolution 202009. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor and fiscal officer to enter into contract to purchase a utility vehicle, generally known as a gator, at a cost not to exceed fourteen thousand dollars. I believe the one we have on, our eyes on is a John Deere.
No.
No? That got changed.
Where's Ranger five-seventy, and the reason that I did not put that in there yet is there is still two sitting here on the table. The reason that I put up to fourteen thousand dollars is the original one I had was actually fourteen thousand two hundred. That's why it used to say sixteen thousand. I was able to lower it because I found today the toy store in Thorndale, which gives state contract pricing, so on the exact same one that we were getting a price from Iron Cove before.
Oh, nice.
So it was fourteen, whatever it was, these people actually do, they install all of the stuff on it for us for free, and this Iron Cove is not. We actually had to pay installation fees for it.
For the windshield and whatnot.
Because the pricing is actually lower. The only two decisions that we're currently making, and I'm only doing this for the record at this point, the two decisions that we're currently trying to make is whether or not we need power steering. To me, that seems like really like a dumb question, except for the fact that I would thought they all have power steering, but apparently that's not the case. So the reason that we would want power steering is if we ever decided to use this to plow, you would need the power steering. If we don't ever use it to plow, we can get away with it. So just as a real quick note, the current invoice without any changes, again, I have it up to fourteen thousand, but without any changes without power steering is only eleven seven fifty-seven. With power steering, just as an FYI, is thirteen two fifty-seven, so it's a huge difference for fifteen hundred dollars for power steering. Is that right?
Yep.
Yeah, fifteen hundred dollars for power steering. That's something that I would love your as input. I know that, you know, at, at the end of the day, I would like for you guys to decide whether or not you think you're ever going to need a four or five, because it's a fifteen hundred dollar difference.
Well, what, what, do, do we have, we haven't talked again about a snowboard, but I know that for this walkway by the parking lot.
It'd be nice.
So we can't use it, if, we couldn't use a small plow on the gator to do that?
Apparently not without power steering.
What does the gentleman do?
I don't, I don't mean, I don't care about that.
What is his perspective?
I just mean, can we use a gator? Or do we still have to buy a snowboard?
Um, the walkway, the chain, the dam in here, you mean that one?
Just the parking lot.
I want to point something out. This is just to be able to have power steering. This still does not include the price of the plow.
Right.
So just as an FYI, you're probably about fifteen, two thousand dollars to do something like that, so, but again, two years down the road, if you guys wanted to do that, you have, if you do the power steering, you'll have that capability. If you don't, you're definitely not going to do it. So I just before, you know, it's one of those things, we don't want to put the cart before the horse. We need something to obviously get moving for this, so I want to make sure that you guys know, if I move forward without the power steering, I'm going to cut your guys' heads off not being able to change your mind later, but if you go this direction, you have power steering. He basically said that, he doesn't have a preference between it, it's just whether or not the way that we move in the future, do we want it? So I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know.
I, I would say with a plow on the front of a UTV, or, yeah, UTV, plowing the parking lot there in front would be easy and the exact same, the exact level of job we would be good at.
We don't, so we also have all those walking trails that we will, are now coming to be our...
Yeah, but we, we talked about that.
We may, we may, we may in the future want to throw a plow in there to clear the walking trail.
And we could do that.
Really nice, so I, I'm of the opinion that we should get the power steering.
Yeah, especially when I think about, because the walk, unfortunately, the walking trail here, I don't think we could do, because it's in such bad shape and so uneven, you could apply that because there's too many bumps, but all of the new ones down there that are nice and smooth and level, slap a plow on that, and do, 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 hey, go clear walk, people. Take your old puppies out.
So again, I just wanted you guys to have the opportunity to make the decision and not administration, because it is, it's a fifteen hundred dollar difference. We're already spending this amount of money. I just, you know, I know a lot of us talked about the truck. I can't believe it doesn't have a winch, even though we thought it was going to, so it's, now you can't just go throw it on, because it's...
Yeah, I sort of like those ones.
Beneficial for us.
Change of the realization that it's best to...
That was my, that was my, my first question. How we doing on the use?
It's, I can't find anything within a hundred miles worth of looking, you know, that...
They're all UTVs.
That, that would meet our needs.
Yeah, they're all a little wide.
And then starting to look at it, I think we need to go big or go home. That's my way I look at this purchase.
It's a tool that should be as useful for us in the future as we can possibly.
Yeah.
Well, it already been out.
I've got to change it.
Very happy.
It's a change of heart on that.
Our, our other part-time maintenance person is already, you know, clearly everybody's out of, not everybody's out of work, but many people are home for the next couple of weeks, and he's actually...
Wish I was.
There's, there's my ballpark, so now, you know, he's got to drive this truck to go pick up trash and, you know, do different things like that. It's very difficult for him, because they're so used to just jumping on the ballpark and going, so it's, it's definitely a used automobile that we, that we have. So I'm going to, I don't know if you guys want to kind of just go around the room and say, I know you haven't passed it yet, but just, or after you pass it, if you guys want to go around the room, if you pass it?
So I, I would throw on one more thing here, is that if we're already talking about waiving readings, and how are you...
We are not doing it as an emergency, and I did that on purpose.
Why?
I, because I was trying to not put too much on you guys. That's your...
Well, here, here I am offering, I, I, you know, if we, if we have a person who can't Well, here, here I am offering, I, I, you know, if we, if we have a person who can't get work done with, because he's lacking the, the tool. Yeah, we have two people who are hoping to do more work with a tool that we are about to vote on spending the money. Right? Spending the money tomorrow so we can get more work out of people makes more sense than waiting thirty days to me. So if, you know, I would
Not opposed to passing it as an emergency.
I would suggest we add emergency language.
On you guys.
So I'm always happy with emergency language.
So, so let's, let's just raise, raise that as a first, as a question. Does anybody, is anybody opposed to adding emergency language?
Do we need to move that to amend it? Do you need to actually make a formal amendment?
So you, you would just, when you, when you, when you, yeah, in your
I used to do it amendment.
Yeah, in your, in your motion to, for passage, you would add emergency language.
And amend the initial question that you
Yeah, so procedurally now we need to have a vote to waive the readings and then a, and then a move, motion to pass.
Okay. All right, and then it sounds like the mayor wants a straw, what have you, or
Straw pool.
Or do we want power steering or not? Maybe someone can just make a motion. I think we should have power steering.
Provide, provide we pass it.
Provide we pass it. There we go. Okay, so I move that we waive the third reading and pass this as a
Waive the third reading.
Waive the third reading first.
Second, oh yeah, just third.
Second, so there's that.
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
We have a second. Oh wait, who was the second?
Uh, I was the second.
I'm gonna get trouble, didn't do that.
He's second in the last one, too.
I got it. I'm, I'm gonna get fired in this show. Okay, Councilman Bruger.
Aye.
Councilman Benedetti.
Aye.
Council President Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Wall.
Aye.
And Councilman McNamara.
Well, as the public already got a first and second reading, aye.
There you go.
I'm just concerned by our legitimacy and our appearance.
There all supposed to be stuff quarantined anyway. They can't come out for us. No pitchforks on my yard.
Yeah.
All right, now. I'll get one of those yellow flags and the black dot in it like they do in Swit's Family Robinson.
Ooh, you have Disney Plus. They've got the sixties and the forties version. I love the sixties one.
All right, now we will move to pass this as an emergency so that we can purchase it as soon as possible and get people back to work.
Second.
Don't tell me Benedetti seconds.
Council President Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Bruger.
Aye.
Councilman Wall.
Aye.
Councilman McNamara.
Aye.
And Councilman Benedetti.
Aye.
Could, could we though actually modify this title up here?
I will.
Just for future, just makes it easier to find and read legislation later if you want to.
Yeah, so when you, before you sign it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then this
Yeah.
Just be at the, at the top, just clearing emergency.
And then we'll do that, like, I think we need to do like a number five or whatever that number is and have that overage. We'll do that. Yes, we will do that. All right, go ahead.
Okay, lastly, ordinance for twenty twenty. Hey, and this is the second reading too, so we're gonna check the wave.
Wait, we forgot the straw pool.
Oh, um, I motion that any gator or UTV that the administration purchases come with power steering. Second.
No, no, this is just the I. All, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion comes with an empty player.
Strong, uh
Strong support.
Strong support for
Well, I just want your guys' support and so to speak.
Yeah.
And if I have any other questions, I will shoot you guys a email and just ask you general. Okay. Where are we at?
We're at ordinance four twenty twenty.
Now, now why do we have to?
This is not being passed as an emergency, doesn't need to be passed as an emergency, but if you guys aren't gonna be here, this is actually for the MUNICO thing that's gonna pass, or it's already passed and the thirty days is actually up on the twenty fifth, so if we're not here the twenty third, we can't write our check.
We may as well just wrap up all the business we have.
And that's really the, the end of all of this.
Be bad first, like
This one we're thinking of passing, waiving the reading because we're not sure if we're gonna have in-person meetings. This is already passed that we're doing this. This is appropriating the money for something that we've already said we're gonna get the money for.
Been read numerous times.
Yes.
And it's appropriation, so there is no need for an emergency because appropriation is already immediately effective.
Yeah.
And then part, we've actually restated, because I think we were kind of mumbling.
Yes.
Just for the record of why we did do that again tonight, why we're passing some of these things as an emergency, the unknown.
Oh, yeah, I mean, this one in particular, because it's not we're supposed to have a meeting next Monday, but we don't know with state and federal guidelines if we're gonna be able to have in-person meetings in the immediate future, and so we are trying to pass some of this legislation a little quicker than normal before we maybe sequester ourselves in not meeting to have these.
Thank you. All right, am I doing real well? Are we there?
Um, I have not moved to waive the third reading yet, so I'm gonna move to waive the third reading.
Second.
There we go. Councilperson Benedetti, seconds.
All right, Councilman Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilman Wall.
Aye.
Councilman McNamara.
Aye.
Council President Trump.
Aye.
And Councilman Bruger.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, so we have waived the third reading. So ordinance oh four twenty twenty. Once again, we want us to make supplemental appropriations for the current expenses of the village of the Minerva Park for year twenty twenty. This is paying for the MUNIServe website, correct, development?
Yeah, and the other one is, and please forget the number four.
Um, the bubblers?
Yes, and, and actually, can we talk about that for seven seconds?
Oh, okay, so that's why there's two on here. It's two thousand for the MUNIServe.
Yes.
And eighty-six hundred to fix the air raiders of the North Lake.
Sixteen hundred, the other's already been budgeted. The other one is for the contract. Um, so that's already been budgeted. This is actually just to increase two thousand because the estimate's sixteen twenty.
Okay.
So it's to increase to, for two thousand dollars for any other lake. Um, and I think, obviously, I've not approved for them to do it yet until we actually do this.
Yeah, I had it backwards.
But there's discussion as to whether or not I'm going to approve it. So if you guys pass this right now, can we talk about that for thirty seconds? So you guys can tell me what you want me to do in the forward with the bubblers. So I know we're approving the money, that's fine, but I know that there's a little discussion as to whether or not you want to fix them now or what we want to
Last meeting, we decided
I mean, they should continue to work after the land, after we can get the renovation project and restoration project done.
See why we won't fix them now, and who knows when we're actually, unfortunately. I don't think we have a timeline inside of even six months of starting to drain lakes or anything.
No, everything that I've been doing has been completely ground to holes.
Yeah. And this, I think our, our best, I mean, our honest goal is to have a plan in place into the year so we can start next spring or something.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
But yeah, that's, there's plenty, yeah.
Because I, I don't see it that way. We can't, we can't, I understand the importance of being
You've been discussing it way longer than I am. Maybe you know that's, that's there closer.
The thing that we're talking about now is that, is this, you know, the threat of coronavirus and how it's gonna impact cleaning up the lakes. And I don't see that happen.
Well, it's not as much about cleaning up the lakes as much as it is the issues that go with the people who will be cleaning up the lakes, large gatherings, unnecessary, unessential movements, exposures. I mean, this is a very, very serious illness.
Eliminate a, you know, a lake, well, that's okay.
Yeah, can, can we vote? Yeah, let's just vote on this. I think I took us down the road a couple there.
I'm sorry.
So now I'm lost. We moved to waive the third reading on this already.
Yeah, we did, we did move for passage.
Okay, let's move for passage.
Second.
Council President Trump.
Aye.
Councilman Benedetti.
Aye.
Councilman Wall.
Aye.
Councilman Bruger.
Aye.
And Councilman McNamara.
Aye.
And that's all. Old business, new business, drivers first, whichever one's on the list.
New businesses first.
Oh, didn't hear any. Old business? Oh, didn't hear any. I'm just kidding.
I'm pretty certain projects ground to a hole, so I'm sorry to the people who were present.
Um, I will just go ahead and do a little old business news.
Don't worry about voting either.
Exactly.
Falling apart.
More or less, just for the, anybody that hasn't seen the Facebook page, but I guess if you're on Facebook Live, you've probably seen it. Um, the community building is actually closed here until further notice for the most part. Um, we've not set an actual date, but every private meeting has been canceled inside the community building. The building itself is open for employees, but it is closed to the public at this point in time. Anybody that does have an emergency, still call nine one one. But if you need to report anything, they are asking you to call five two five three three three. If it's a non-emergency, the officers will determine if it requires a face-to-face or if it's just somebody filing a report. If they can do it over the phone, that is what they're, they're trying to do at this point in time, but they are, they are responding clearly. If there's, if there's an issue, you are still to call nine one one, just like you normally would do. But just trying to avoid the face-to-face contact. Mayor's Court has been canceled for all of March and all of April. Um, the first initial court date at this point is May sixth. Again, having not many people in here for Mayor's Court is not recommended by the CDC. Actually, I think we can. So, so that has been canceled as well. And basically, we'll keep you up to date. Anybody that's looking to get permits, anybody that's looking to do that, I have included email addresses on the front door. It's on the website. I've included here, guys, as if you guys saw the post yesterday. So I'm just asking people that if they have questions, problems, concerns, to call us via phone or send any one of us an email. That includes our fiscal officer, our court courts. I, zoning officer is, his email address, I've included that in a couple places. So anybody that's looking for permits or anything like that, we ask that you do it via email at this point. And then if we need to set up something for them to stop outside. Pool memberships, we're still hoping that people will just mail in their pool memberships. We're looking to get a mail-in out front, like if PCA has, to allow people to drop off pool memberships at this point in time, because again, we do have people that do want to come in and drop off checks. I just had somebody do it on Friday. So we're working on a couple different things to make it easier for residents. Um, anybody that wants to pay a court fine, same thing. We're asking that they do it online. We do have people that want to pay, you know, in, in here all the time with cash. Um, but at this time, we are, it's inconvenient, we know, but at this time, we're not taking cash payments. So maybe they can go get a money order and drop it off or whatever. But again, we're working out details as far as exactly what we're doing to follow all of the rules and regulations as well, so.
Is that legal to not accept cash payment?
At this point, if the building is, if it's closed to the public, I'm not really sure how they bring it in.
Most buildings are closed to the public.
It is, it is a problem. I mean, it is. This population.
I believe the question was, is it legal to decline American currency?
Yeah, so, so if someone shows up to the door with cash in hand and their check, I guess the question is, what are we doing? So if that fine that they're attempting to pay then is late because we have refused their payment.
At this point, we have gone that far.
All right.
So at this point, we were told that it's closed, this building is closed to the public. So that's the answer we have.
Having been dying being for many a late traffic payment, I would just like to keep an eye on that.
Yeah, and that's something we can imagine.
How, how much do we, how much, how often do we have people in here with fun? Like, how many people are we finding a week for traffic?
Every day.
Every day.
Every day.
Multiple times a day. And just so you know, we did accept some today. So we, we put, yes. Um, the people that don't believe how many people walk through this building in a day come sitting here for twenty-four hours.
I totally worry about it.
Oh, yeah, no, we have a lot. We do have a lot of people that come in and pay via credit card. Um, but again, paying via credit card, they can do online. But you would be surprised how many people come in here to pay with credit card.
Not at all. I would not be surprised.
They close the library. Now, I've been, you're sat at the library in red, I've read for a while, and you see this whole people are constantly using the printer there, using the printer there, printing off stuff. They don't have computers that have
Absolutely.
To make these payments.
So
Oh, yeah.
Mary is learning many lessons very quickly.
Yes. So, you know, at this point, it, it's something that we're gonna have to work out with them. If we have to do a draw-off so people can leave money at the front or, you know, in the little cubby thing, because that's the other thing. At this point, we're just asking delivery people to just leave it outside. Um, most of the time, you don't have to sign for anything, so we're just asking that they leave it out there. If they need a signature and somebody's here, I don't have a problem running out there, and I'm sure that you won't either. So, but again, just bringing them into the building is something we're trying to avoid. So, you know, we're doing it on a case by case, just like the rest of the world is right now. So that was my, that was my little blurb, and yes, we can imagine that that's gonna be an issue. Um, and again, the drop-off, you know, like outside is, is obviously
Is there a slot in the door?
With that?
Is there a slot in the door like a mail slot?
I mean, there have been other municipalities who have been
One, this one.
There's different brands. That may be something to consider just for a short term.
Yeah, give them a first meeting.
Yeah, at this point, there is. So again, that might be something that
So what, I guess what I'm getting is that certain big bunch of people shown up in the morning and find out that it's canceled?
Um, we actually spent the entire
Telling all those people.
Leah spent the entire day calling, giving voicemails for every single person from Mayor's Court, and most of them signed on the front door. But she called and left every single person that she had a contact for. Becky will be here tomorrow. It will be posted on the website tomorrow, first thing, as soon as she gets here that Mayor's Court has been canceled. Um, so we're gonna do everything that we possibly can, but I guess the, we did
Tried to notify it.
We tried to notify, and then we've got it posted out there. Um, and I think the biggest thing that, you know, we, everybody has to remember is it's not convenient for anybody to show up here and it not happen, but guess what? People are showing up to all kinds of places that are closed. Um, so it's, at this point, it's far life.
We should be, it's, it's good that we are following these guidelines. People need to be at home. All non-essential travel, all non-essential interactions. This is, I, I cannot reiterate enough, the early preliminary, like, uh, numbers and, um, how would you say it, pathophysiology reports I've seen. This is an incredibly serious disease. So it's, it's good that we are discouraging.
So the only thing that I guess I want to ask, and then we're gonna do meeting adjourned, is I, I move, I, I, I really don't want to have the meeting, obviously, March twenty-third. I think it's just
Well, I think we've powered through all of our legislation already.
And that's why I did it that way. So is it okay for me, are you guys okay with us canceling it via website via everything else? Or do you guys want to leave it on here in case something comes up and you guys decide you need to
I would just leave it on there because there's nothing wrong with canceling it.
The day of work. Okay. Well, again, I don't want to
I think we should just leave it, just in case.
You only gotta get twenty more notice to
This situation is not going to improve in the next week. I'm gonna cancel it.
And I think the only thing you would leave is if there's something that you guys would need to do.
Next one after that isn't until what, Monday, that, or is it the sixth or the thirteenth?
So then the next question's gonna be in total eleven.
I don't tell you if you can, if, uh, if you want to at least have, because it, I think it would be great to continue a work session if we could do it via Zoom.
So the eleventh work session online?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll have to tell me what the Zoom is and how I download it.
Yeah, no, it's simple to download the app. We just need one account, and if you want to give me a credit card, I'll take care of it.
Um, do you want, before I stop in tomorrow, it's close to the general, I'll look if it's not close to you. So I will be here tomorrow. Um, if you want to text me before you come or just tell me before you leave about what time you're coming, and I'll make sure I'm here. Um, just because I do periodically throughout, I won't be here all day.
And then quick looking at Zoom, it also looked like if we, oh, we got for the extra forty bucks a month for the webinar add-on. We could then, we could then stream it to Fa, to Facebook and/or YouTube.
Is this something that we are personally kind of important?
No, no, no.
Not necessarily.
We, we would all connect with a free account.
Okay.
There's, there's one host.
Okay.
We would have one user.
And I would assume that councilman provided me with an electronic device to log into.
He says with a phone and a laptop.
Cell phone is
Yeah, this one I stole from Buster all this time.
So, well, you know, if you look at the, the, the twenty-dollar version though, it says that, you know, once you, once you completed it, you, you can
Yeah, you can always, you can always download the, download it from the, from the cloud service. And I think that's also, yeah, and that's good, but just having it available for people to watch live adds a particular graphic, right? Yeah, it also, yeah, that's what I would say is that I, if we can swing a live stream out of it, I would strongly prefer that. And I think that's worth forty dollars a month.
And I, and just as an FYI, that was kind of my understanding of some of the things that, um, that we were sent was still, I mean, is still considered a public meeting record. Like, if you, if you
Well, that's, I read that twice, and my one paragraph definitely says that under these, under only these particular emergencies circumstances, they are allowing flexibility in terms of council members calling in on the conference line or being remote. They did, it did say that.
Yes, it does.
I mean, I, it's always better to, I, I, it's hard to then have an audience, your audience is also a help, but it can, cannot be done with the right technology.
Um, and then just also
This might be a big opportunity for us to finally get it. If, if, you know, Ohio sees that it could work well, maybe they would change the law. So we could have these
Good test.
Many, many laws will hopefully end up changed at the end of this event.
Yeah, how many people are working at home that could absolutely not work at home? So, yeah, I have no issues whatsoever. But I don't think this is gonna be short-term under any stretch, whether we believe that it's as big of an issue as they say it is. It doesn't matter what our opinions are. I think this is gonna be a little longer than most of us care to imagine. So, yeah, if you want to get with me tomorrow, and yes, we'll absolutely do it when it comes to my part. Because I just, I want to make sure that we're following what we're supposed to be following. So, and we will be working on getting some sort of draw-offs out there for pool memberships. And again, maybe you want, and there is a very small one for Mayor's Court out there, but the problem with the one that we got from Mayor's Court is we can't put fines or Mayor's Court or anything on it because people would know that there's money there. So we gotta do something that's, you know, not
Just send drop box. I mean, the
Exactly.
I, the accountant I don't too have, so they can send drop box.
Yes, but I can, if I owe a fine, I can come take a, a pry bar, pop the lock off, walk away Yes, but I can, if I owe a fine, I can come, take a, a pry bar, pop the lock off, walk away, not even do anything.
Well, that's why we're saying we wouldn't put Mayor's Court in there.
Yeah, yeah, I'd say, I put my money in there. I don't know what you mean. Well, I got broken in, well, so I wasn't taking my thing. What's if I...
Yeah. We just wanna make sure that what we're doing...
So if we have the, if we have the, well, if we have the Dropbox, so it's only open during office hours and it's in between, and the best move is an alternative.
Yeah.
So we'll work with, um, Brian tomorrow and maybe see what options we have instead of ordering something I never done. Maybe something, a Lowe's or Home Depot, something that we can install. Or again, something that we can just put in this little cubby, um, that's not to where you can't carry it out, but something that we can attach to the wall. Right now, yeah, something that we can bolt to the wall and inside this locked area. Not locked area, but they can walk in the first part.
Those drive-up bank teller drawers.
Just so you know, we were actually talking, yeah, we were talking about doing a drive-through Mayor's Court before we, you know, before we got the okay to close it. We were like, we're gonna do our...
Yolde.
Well, considering they're doing the...
They were driving suspended and they show up to their drive-through Mayor's Court.
Now it's time we're on what's going on in here and, um, so we will work on this. We will try to get that up and running for April eleventh. Um, if it doesn't work for some reason, then, you know, maybe we'll...
Don't we have a, some committee meeting this month or...
No, it's legislative. So again, if you want to send emails via legislative, I don't have anything right now. We put everything together. We needed to get it on the table.
But there's two, is that here?
There's, there's the two. There's the sidewalk and the planning and zoning committee, uh, structure that are still, that moved out of committee and still waiting on.
So the other, the other thing that I don't necessarily have a complete answer to is as of right now, planning and zoning is still planning on having their work session here on Wednesday. That is, um, going to be four to five members. That's it. There's, um, it is a work session, so I don't believe it's not public. Yeah, I, at this point in time, I believe they are still gonna have it. Here's the problem with that. Um, Eric mentioned that we are, um, doing the zone, the variance, so on the eighteenth. So that's gonna entail even more people being here. So we'll have to verify with Eric whether or not that is going to get postponed or not.
You're telling variance for a fence variance?
No, it has to do with a deck or something.
A deck.
Um, forged deck, something. It's over on Lake...
Oh, it's on a corner or...
Yeah. So, planning and zoning is still planning on meeting here on the eighteenth, um, due to a variance. I don't know exactly what's gonna happen with that. I know it's gonna get shipped up to you guys, but at this point, um, it will not be the twenty-third. So, cause I'm, that one, I'm not canceling it, but I don't think we're gonna meet on the twenty-third. Legislation is also, like I said, the twenty-third, but I just, I don't believe in, I think if we're being told to stay home, we should not be coming in here, even if there is only six or eight of us.
Of the ten people, it's...
I know. I agree. So, but, but I need to have someone's, um, debt if, if they're gonna approve it. Cause we have to correct, that's come up for approval. That's something certainly that could be done.
Like, what is the bare minimum amount of people or steps that has to take to approve this family's debt? Like, can, can we find a real reason if it's already there?
But once it comes to us, the bare minimum we can do is what we did tonight, cause we need five people. We need five council members to read it. Do you pa- do you pass a resolution or whatever to do that?
No, it's not at all.
It's just a...
Oh, it's just a, yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, we, I don't know if we can do that online at all.
Anything that we have a question in regards to, if we forward it to Gene, Gene will give his, um, opinion whether or not he thinks that we can, should. Again, if we have, if, um, like you guys just said, we'll cancel the twenty-third. If we need to come in here, if you guys need to come in here, if there needs to be five people, we'll, um, assuming Joe's not gonna make it, but if we can do anything via Zoom, um, we can do that as well. We'll work on that tomorrow.
Cause I do agree with what I am, was starting to get out there, you know? I don't want them being like, I want this deck. I came to you. Okay, yes, but now you're gonna have to wait like a month until we get together and officially say yes.
It could be longer than that. The whole process takes a while.
Oh, I don't disagree.
They have to, because it has to be hosted.
But personal safety and health is more important than someone's death.
Exactly. I think that that's probably all keep, you know, again, as much as I wanna go out to dinner tonight and go on my trip in three days, I'm not sure that it's really gonna happen. So, you know, yes, I don't disagree. It's a crappy time that we are doing a variance, but in the same sense, if I leave this room and go home and get my children sick or my mother sick, that's, that's the whole point of why we're not supposed to be doing all these things.
Yeah.
And I know we're here right now. So what's the difference? We're gonna do it now. Why not do it again on the twenty-third?
Cause things are gonna get worse.
They're gonna be exponentially higher from now.
So again, I'll leave that up to you guys. I'll follow up with you guys on Friday to determine, you know, where, where we sit with that or maybe actually after Wednesday, once we see that we even have a planning and zoning meeting. So I don't know if all of the members are gonna be able to be in attendance as we speak, as of now, anyways. So, but that's where we're at.
Depending on the needs of the hospital, they've already been asking everybody certifications and talking about drafting some of us to different places. So I can't guarantee when exactly my schedule is.
Can guarantee what that's for?
I work for Grant, so downtown, right in the middle of it. Oh, wow. We already got two or three cases. It's, this is not a matter of if, I cannot reiterate that enough. It's not even a matter of when it's happening. It's a matter of how bad this is going to get. I, I don't need to be dealing with one. People need to know this and you're totally aware of it.
Really lucky to have a governor that has guts to get out there ahead of it.
I have been very impressed with Governor White. I will go on the record saying that.
Hold on, wait, wait, wait.
That's unusual.
Can, can we move to adjourn?
Please.
Yep.
Move to adjourn?
Yep.
Second favorite?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.
You're called for all opposed.
Uh...
Opposed? Are you opposed?
I am always opposed. I always love more debate. I have another good meeting. More cowbell.